Good evening, everyone. Today is April 1st, 2021, and I'm calling this meeting of the McComb Township zoning board appeals meeting in order at 7 o'clock. You can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, tonight's agenda is your roll call. Member Tuffield?
Here.
Member Piper?
Here.
Member Swanson is absent today. Member Posey is absent today, and member DeCosta is present. Chairman, I make a motion to excuse or to exclude Member Posey and Member Swanson from all roll call votes this evening.
I will second that.
So, motion by Tuffield, second by second, uh, second by Piper to refuse Posey and Ms. Swanson from all roll call. Roll call would be, Mr. Tuffield?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta votes yes. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda items. Uh, it's important to note that all fees have been paid and all property notice have been mailed out. Do we have motion discussion on this item?
I will move to, uh, accept the agenda as presented.
Support. Motion by Piper, second by Tuffield. Roll call, Member Piper?
Yes.
Member Tuffield?
Yes.
Member DeCosta votes yes, that motion passes. Number five is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Do we have discussion in the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion on this item, I would make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes as read.
I will second that.
So, motion by Tuffield, second by Piper to approve the previous meeting minutes as presented. Member Tuffield?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Member DeCosta votes yes as well, that motion passes. So, we are now in our new business, and we will go in order. We have five items tonight. The first item is a variance request for zoning ordinance section 10 dot 0704D. The petitioner is Michael Leibling, and this is regarding permanent parcel 0816379001. And Mr. Box, if you can take us through this, please.
Yes, thank you. I am going to share my screen here. See my screen now? So, this, uh, this item is, uh, that we've made pool in a side slash front yard. It's a double fronted lot. As you see on the map here, they are seeking a, uh, a variance through the setback. This is somewhat of a unique plot in that, first of all, it's a corner lot, um, so they have a larger side yard setback than a standard lot would have. Additionally, uh, you may recognize the location on the map here that is, um, Old Town Hall, and that's the, the new, uh, fire and police station that's being built, uh, a little bit to the east. Directly next door is a senior center that's currently being built. So, it is a corner lot, but Basswood Street will actually never go through because the senior center is being constructed. So, that being said, um, as you see here, the, the drawing or the layout of the pool that they have provided, uh, they, they are encroaching 15 feet into the setback on the side yard. Uh, that's what they're seeking a variance for. They do also enter, uh, into the easement on the rear. That's not something they need a variance for. That's something they'll have to work with water and sewer, uh, and get an easement encroachment agreement for. So, they're, they're seeking 15 foot, uh, encroachment into the side yard setback. Uh, I believe you received all the reviews from our internal departments.
Are there any questions from Mr. Box?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Box, just one question. If this was a, uh, non-corner lot, uh, the pool would be allowed to the side setback of seven and a half feet. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And currently what they're asking for is the water's edge to be 13 tent?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious, uh, I assume that one time they expected that street to go through and they figured a developer would build another subdivision, just to at least clear.
Okay. Okay. All questions being asked is, uh, we can bring on the petitioner. Is petitioner present with us tonight? If so, can you please, um, state your name and address for the record?
I am. Uh, I apologize, my camera's not working. My name's Mike Leibling. I live at, uh, 51076 Bentonwood Drive.
And can you, can you go quickly go over your, our request for the variance here?
Absolutely, yes. So, uh, again, you stated pretty much what we're requesting is to get, uh, our 25 foot setback reduced to 10 feet in order to fit, uh, the pool that we, as a family, decided upon in our yard. As stated, we live on a, on a technical double front lot, which has no through it, uh, traffic on our side, and, uh, uh, so yeah, we're looking, we're looking to get that setback to 10 feet, not the seven and a half that a normal side lot would be, but I think we can get the pool fit, uh, as shown in the drawing.
Thank you. Are there any members, have any questions for petitioner?
No.
Hearing none, I appreciate, thank you. Uh, next, we will open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public here that wish to speak on this item? If there are, please raise your hand, or I believe press star nine. Give it a couple seconds here to see if we have anybody. We see no members from the public. We will close the public portion of this item. We'll bring it back up to the board for any comments or questions or motions.
Chairman, if there's-
Go ahead.
If there's no further discussion on this item, I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance, uh, for the side yard setback as requested. This would be for current parcel 0816379001. This would be based upon the recommendations of our, uh, consultants, uh, and also upon the finding that the lot is unusual due to the fact that it is a corner lot on a street that will never be developed or put through, and that the requested, uh, the requested variance is less than what would be allowed in a standard side yard lot.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Tuffield, second by Piper. Any further comments or questions on this item? I will take a roll call vote. Member Tuffield?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Member DeCosta votes yes, that motion is passed. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to item B. Item B before us tonight is a variance request for section, uh, actually, there's two variance requests regarding, we'll start with item B. It's section 10 dot 0504A. This is, uh, a request by petitioner, Mooney Real Estate Holdings, and it's regarding permanent parcel 0813300056. Mr. Box, can you take us through this one, please?
Yes, I am going to share my screen again. Okay, you guys can see that now. Uh, so, as you mentioned, there are actually two here, so I'm going to kind of talk about both of them together here. The two variance requests, uh, as you see, parcel number one on the map here is a three to one lot ratio, uh, variance that they're seeking, and the second one being parcel two that, uh, they would require 300 feet of roadway frontage, and they will only have about 200 feet of roadway frontage. So, um, the, I think what, the idea here is there's an existing house on parcel number one, and they're looking to split that off to, to keep the house intact, uh, and the, the rear portion of the lot would, would likely be developed into residential. That is what it's master plan for, R1 residential. Now, a number of these lots, we know, uh, from, from speaking with developers and community, have, are, already have ownership of some of the surrounding lots, so it's not unreasonable to think that this would get paired with some of the surrounding lots. Uh, so the, the 200 foot frontage as opposed to 300 foot, so the reason that I was not here when 300 foot was quoted, but I'm guessing it had to do with typically if a traditional development would be 300 feet, so you can fit a roadway through as well as houses on each side of the roadway. You need 300 feet to do that. By having 200 feet, you'd have a roadway with houses on one side. It's not also unreasonable to think that should this parcel be split off and, and combined with some of the neighboring parcels, the, the neighboring parcels all have enough roadway frontage that a road could get into these subdivisions or potential subdivisions. Uh, and it's not unreasonable to think that that other front piece will be split off just like parcel one is, uh, that they're seeking right now. As far as the three to one, um, I, I think the, the reason that, and the petitioner's on, I'm sure they'll, they'll speak to this, but I think one of the reasons that they're doing, uh, the split where they're doing it is because of the drain. It's, if they were to shorten it to make it within three to one, uh, that extra space on the south side of the drain would not really be usable space for any type of residential development on the main piece of parcel two. Additionally, putting bridges across drains are, are very costly. Developers would typically try to avoid that if possible. Uh, so again, if it's, if it's paired with the neighboring piece, uh, they would probably cross the drain one time somewhere on the neighboring piece and out of this piece. I think that's all I have there.
Okay, are there any members from the board have any questions for Mr. Box?
On parcel one, that's, that, that house, the residents are planning on staying there, or?
Yeah, we had this discussion with the real estate, uh, company, and then this will be retained by the Archdiocese of Detroit. We understand they have a bishop that resides in there, and they do hold some churchy facilities here, so that is going to be retained by the Archdiocese.
Any other questions? Okay, we will take it out to the petitioner. Uh, is the petitioner here to speak on this issue?
Uh, yes. My name is Michael McInerney. I'm with the Archdiocese of Detroit. Uh, my screen says Nancy Wilson, because that's who the, uh, the, uh, invite was sent to, but, uh, it's, it's actually me. And our council, uh, Kelly, Kelly, Kelly Lockman from Bodmin is also on the call.
Can you say?
I think I, I'm sorry, Michael McInerney.
And your address as well, please?
12 State Street, Detroit, Michigan, 48236. I don't know offhand the, uh, the address of this property, but it's property that we've owned for 25 years.
23965 23 Mile Road.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, if you can take us through your, your petition here, please.
Uh, as they say, we've owned this. It's a, it's a, all in about a 40 acre parcel. It's been leased to, uh, uh, for farm use for years. Um, the house that sits on the, what's designated as parcel number one is not a residence. It's a, it's a chapel that's used by the parish. The parish is, uh, St. Francis. The main campus is up on 28 Mile Road. Uh, this is the, 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 uh, parish territory runs down to 21 Mile Road, and this has been the southern, uh, location of the campus for many years. It's used for services on a regular basis. Uh, it is also used by the regional bishop as his office. He resides in the area, but he doesn't reside there. No one resides in that house. Um, we, we are interested in selling off the surplus land, and, but we are very interested in keeping the, the house. It looks like a house, even though it's not utilized as a house, for, uh, the purposes of the parish and for the, uh, office purposes of the, uh, the bishop. That's the reason for the split. It really doesn't have anything to do with the, uh, the drain. Uh, we kind of arbitrarily, uh, drew the parcel to, uh, go north to the drain, just, just like I said arbitrarily. Um, I know there are, I, I understand that fire and engineering have signed off. I know there are, uh, access issues. Uh, we consider that to be, those to be issues that can be addressed in a site plan context. I will say that we are, uh, close to having the property under contract with the developer who has indicated that he would access the rear property from both, uh, 23 Mile Road and from the east. He's either has or is working to get properties to the east under control.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak on that? Uh, did you mention Kelly?
Um, only if there's questions.
Are there any members of the board that would wish to ask any questions to petitioner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. McInerney, just a question on this, uh, one of these requests is with regards to road frontage. Uh, you indicated that the individual or, or company that is looking to potentially acquire this, uh, might have some control or is about to have control over property to the east, which might potentially give the combined property enough, um, enough road frontage not to require a variance. Is there a reason you're not waiting for that, uh, to the point where it wouldn't require a variance in the first place?
Well, that's because, I mean, first of all, we started this, uh, several months ago, long before we had a prospective buyer, and number two, we, we don't even have the property under contract, much less are we certain as to what his, uh, the status of his efforts with the other property, uh, is. So, we, we really would like to get the variance. And as I say, it's really a, a practical consideration relating to the, uh, the operation of the, uh, parish. It, it doesn't have anything to do with land use.
Um, so, so for our regard, I, I would expect to consider this on its merits alone and not on potential adjoining parcels that may aid in, uh, in access in the future. Is that inaccurate? Would that be an accurate assessment for us?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question. I believe this was from our plan reviewer, um, and this is on a plan, uh, a review that I actually and I have not had enough time to, to review it all the way, but Melissa asks in her rec, or her review, and this is with regards to the three to one, that the applicant, uh, is asked to clarify, uh, why a lot split is necessary prior to issue of, issuance of approval. I think that's basically been answered, but I just want to bring the question up again, um, because that's something Melissa specifically was asking me to review. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have one other question from Mr. Box, and maybe I'll answer it. You indicated that water and sewer engineering departments have reviewed and approved this, or are comfortable with it?
I believe all of their reviews that they are comfortable, um, and the only one that would not necessarily, uh, be in, not necessarily favor, I'm not sure what the correct word is, but that is, would be planning, uh, just because technically it doesn't follow the order itself. It's not that we, we're not, you know, agreeing, you know, with this split. We just can't say we're in support of it necessarily, uh, because then we'd be supporting something that would violate the ordinance.
Okay. Uh, is the petitioner complete with their comments?
Yes, um, just to note, we were provided with a letter that fire has, um, no objections to the property split.
Can you just do me a favor and state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Kelly Lockman, Bodmin PLC, 1901 St. Antoine Street, Detroit, Michigan, 48226.
Thank you very much. All right, hearing no comments?
I do want to add one other thing that I correctly mentioned previously. So, for this, uh, this property, the, the variance request was advertised correctly in the newspaper. The original mailer had all the correct information, except it referred to the parcel being, uh, just off of long year plan growth. So, we did send out a new mailer, uh, and we met all the deadlines, so it has been updated, but I just want that on record. That was a, an incorrect mailer sign out first, which is correct.
I hear no more, Mr. Tuffield?
Yeah, I just, I just want to pop a one thing with, with Ms. Lockman, if I could. Uh, obviously, you know, our, I would assume you know that our standard here should be a practical difficulty. Mr. Box indicated that planning department has a difficult time, uh, recommending approval, not because of, of liking the project, but more because they don't necessarily see a practical difficulty. Do you have anything to add on that that might help us with our decision?
Sure. So, the way that the, the frontage is, is configured on 23 Mile Road there, um, there's 407 feet of frontage, and so if you go to the border of where the house is, um, there's practical difficulty to get any sort of lot split that would result in 300 feet of frontage, um, on the second parcel.
Meaning that if they split it level with the edge of the house, you, you don't feel that they would get 300 feet regardless?
Correct. There isn't sufficient distance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Hearing no comments from the petitioner, we will move on to public comment. If there are any members from the public that would just speak on this issue, please raise your hand in, in the Zoom session, or I believe it's star nine on your phone. Do that end as well. Any public wishing to speak, we'll close the public portion of this item. Uh, we'll move it back up to the board for motions and comments. I, I do want to say that you may notice that we are only three members today. Uh, that being said, all three members must approve this in order to have it pass. If we have one vote, that does not, uh, have the majority of the board. So, all three members would have to vote, uh, either way, on an issue to have it pass. So, um, we are, because of this, we are letting the petitioners request a table of the item till the next meeting if they see fit, and we will entertain that. Is there any other comments from the board or motions, or from the petitioner if they wish to speak that?
Mr. Chairman, I, um, I'd be willing to make a motion on, I have six B, but I just want to verify the petitioner is, uh, satisfied with moving forward, or if they wish to table for, if I make a motion. Petitioner, are you?
We're best, we're satisfied to move forward.
All right. Petitioners say they're satisfied to move forward. At this point, we will, uh, there are no further comments from Mr. Box or petitioner. We will entertain a motion on this item.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion with regards to item 6B. That'll be the request to allow a lot depth width ratio of 3.2 to 1, uh, to approve that variance for current parcel 0813300056. Uh, this would be based upon the fact that to maintain, uh, the use and, and a lot, uh, for the house and to maintain the boundaries that would seem to be set into the current ground, uh, that, uh, the ratio requested would be reasonable for the lot. Um, and that doing otherwise and maintaining the ordinance to create a parcel that doesn't match with the surrounding area.
Motion by Mr. Tuffield?
I will second that motion.
You have a motion in a second? I do have one, I guess, for the question just came up. Looking at items, um, D and C, do both have to be approved, and if they're both not approved, this both would have to be approved, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion, um, by Mr. Tuffield, a second by Mr. Piper. Are there any further comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Tuffield?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta votes yes, that motion passes. We will now move on to item C, which is a variance request with section 10 dot 05041B. This is the same petitioner, Mooney Real Estate Holdings, and this is regarding permanent parcel 0813300056. Mr. Box, I think you talked about these. Is there anything else you want to add to this?
Uh, I guess the only thing I, I would add is, um, with regard to, uh, this statement, uh, by Ms. Lockman, I think she's correct in that, the, the existing structure is, wouldn't allow for a 300 foot roadway frontage, uh, no matter where you drew the line, unless you tore the house down. So, um, the way, where, the location of that house, or I guess parish, uh, facility, I guess they're not using it as a house, but where it's located would not allow for a 300 foot split.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from Mr. Box? I do have one. You stated 300 foot is the, um, required distance for a, uh, typical roadway with a residential property on both sides. You also stated that 200 feet would be sufficient for a house on the one side. Is there, if there's no issues with utilities or the road right of way, we can get that in?
Correct. Hello, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just follow up. We don't really have anything in the ordinance speaking to 200 feet. It only speaks to 300 feet, and that was trying to back end to what the 300 feet is for.
Yeah, that, why that was established was that developers traditionally would need 300 feet or get a roadway of houses on each side.
Any further questions from Mr. Box?
I actually did have one more. I, I'm, I was trying to think of this, and, and I should have followed up with you, Josh. Do we have any areas in the township that you've come across where it's a street with houses on one side? I felt like I can remember several, but I can't place where they are.
Bloody, around 21 Mile.
Garfield, 21.
Right.
Yeah, and, and we also have some site plans in right now that actually have some, uh, roads with houses on, uh, they're just a roadway to step out to the, to the street, so.
The, the one that, uh, off North Avenue, just, uh, north of 159 and on the east side of the road. The, the new one that, actually, I think Mr. Thompson might be here, is here tonight, is that one just, just to the south side of Land Cruze?
Your best part developed it, yep.
That is one, one side only on that first portion, that's correct.
The next item you're going to look at on the agenda is, uh, the first, uh, three and a half lots or so.
There is only one.
On one side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks, Box, so.
So, very good. Does a petitioner have any other further comments regarding item number C?
Sure. Just to reiterate, reiterate that our request is for the lot split. Um, obviously, upon sale to a developer, you'll re-review the site plan, so, um, their housing location will be, again, to your discretion.
Any further questions from the boards of the petitioner? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the public portion of this item. If there's any members of the public that wish to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We will give that a moment as well. Okay, we see no comments from the public. We will close the public portion of this variance request and move it back to the board for any further questions or motions. And I should also note again, same with the, uh, item B, because we only have three items, every, uh, member would have to vote in favor of a variance, um, to pass tonight. You do have the option to table, and we will, we will take that in consideration. Are you comfortable with moving forward at this point?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Petitioner states they are comfortable moving forward, we will go back to the board for any concerns or motions.
I would, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, based on the fact that they can't get the 300 feet without getting rid of the house on the other parcel. It does seem like it's wide enough that they can still utilize it, um, you know, to, uh, develop the property, uh, sick manner, uh, for all residents, so. I think the practical difficulty exists there that makes it, uh, uh, proper for a variance.
Say a second. Support. Motion by Mr. Piper, supported by Mr. Tuffield. Are there any other comments or concerns before we take a roll call vote? Hearing none, we'll go to roll call. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Tuffield?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta also votes yes. That variance passes. Congratulations on your two items tonight. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Moving forward, item D in front of us tonight is a variance from the zoning ordinance section 10 dot 0704A3D. And this is from petitioner Salvador Di Mercio, and it is with regards to permanent parcels 0833151002 and permanent parcel 0833151004. Mr. Box, can you please take us through this one?
Yes, thank you. I am going to share my screen again. So, uh, as you see on the screen, the, the location, this is, uh, a new development, uh, that we're working with the developer on. So, as you see on the screen, the location, this is a new development that we're working with, the developer on the site plan. This is off 21 mile road. Here you see the site plan that they are working with. And to reiterate what we just talked about on the last side, and there are only houses on one side of the road for the first segment of this property. What they are seeking this evening is a 3 to 1 ratio variance, I believe it's four different blocks in the rear of the property. These, these properties are similar to a variance that we looked at at the last meeting in Wolverine, where, yes, they are longer than 3 to 1. Move to the next slide here. As you look a little closer, that's all floodplain, and that can't really be built on anyway. So if you were to measure only to the floodplain, they are within a normal lot size. So if that area did not get included into these lots, the floodplain would become common space, then it would be landlocked, and there would be no way to access it. So it's really kind of unusable land for the developer and largely for these property owners when they purchase these lots. So again, they are longer than 3 to 1, but I think that the planning staff, we see a practical difficulty in that it's all floodplain, and there's really not much else that they can do with this property. I believe the petitioner is here as well, if they, if you have any questions for them, or if they wanted to present anything.
Are there any further questions from Mr. Box this time? Okay, moving forward, is a petitioner here to speak on this issue? If you can, please name an address for the record.
My name is Bill Thompson from Laner Associates. The address is 17001 19 Mile Road, Suite 3, Clinton Township. I think Mr. Box covered it pretty well. There's about 200 foot of floodplain and wetlands at the back of this, these parcels. The initial parcels are like 1,200 feet deep, and they back up to the middle branch of the Clinton River. There's no practical way to develop the land without having the long parcels. It's just not practical to do it. There's no convenient way, or again, practical way to develop that, unless you've filled a floodplain and filled a wetlands, which is definitely not practical. So we're asking for the variance to allow the 3 to 1 ratio to be adjusted for these four particular lots.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the board for the petitioner? Okay, hearing none, we will move to the public portion of this variance request. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We'll give it a couple of seconds to do that. They see none, we will close the public portion of this variance request this time. We'll look back up at the board. Are there any comments, final questions, comments, or motions on this item? And I will also note again for the petitioner, we are only three members tonight, so any vote to pass this variance would require a 3 to 0 vote on this issue. Do you wish to proceed at this time, or would you like to request table in the event?
We'd wish to proceed.
For the record, the petitioner wishes to proceed at this time. Moving it back up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I just did have a question. I want to verify this box and Mr. Skirdow, possible Mr. Thompson. I think something was mentioned about four lots. I only see two parcels here. Just want to verify, is it two or is it four? Do we have?
It's four. Parcel numbers you see are for the larger parcel as a whole. This is actually, there was a lot split combo, and so I believe that just took place. So at the time of the filing, I don't think it was combined officially yet into one.
So would it be, is it appropriate to call out the master parcel and then the lot number, or what else should we reference these?
I think you can reference the lot numbers for the, for the site plan for, for the dismount.
Eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Eight, nine, 10, and 11? Alright, Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to make a motion on this then, if you're, if you're ready. Yes, sir. I would make a motion, and I should say, we should probably do these individually. Mr. Lloyd?
For each lot, I think you can do in one, in one position, so I don't think you have to do each lot. If you can do one motion.
Okay. Then I would make a motion with regards to lots eight, nine, 10, and 11 of the subject property of regard 3 to 1 ratio to approve the requested variance, based on the fact that the properties have natural features which restrict normal building and would, would make granting this variance equitable and would represent a practical difficulty.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion members. Tubfield, second by Mr. Piper. Are there final, any final comments on this motion?
I can tell you from experience that that area does flood frequently, historically, very often.
Any further comments? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Number Tubfield?
Yes.
Number Piper?
Yes.
Number DeCosta votes yes, that motion passes. Congratulations.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Moving forward, there are item E. Item E is a request for consideration of meeting time. This item came up in relation to discussing whether or not we want to adjust the starting time for the zoning board of appeals. Seeing that we are only three members tonight, I will entertain a motion to table this item until we have a full form. So, Mr. Chairman?
And I will second that as well.
Motion by number Tubfield, second by Piper. Any further comments or concerns? We will take a roll call vote. Mr. Tubfield?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta votes yes, that item is officially tabled until the next meeting. Mr. Box, you know, if we haven't made meeting yet, we will have another. So as long as we have a full forum, we will discuss that. That completes new business for this evening. We move on to old business, and we have one item in our old business. This is a, this is a motion, or this is a item that came up in our March meeting. It's a variance request for section 206.8.1. Petitioner is Lawrence Warren, and it is regarding permanent parcel 0818326002. Mr. Box, if you could just kind of give us a refresher on this item?
Sure, I'm going to share my screen one last time here. So this variance request is for the signs of the sign for Sunny's Pools. Sunny's Pools is located off 23 Mile. It's on it here. Off 23 Mile on Industrial Drive, near Hayes Road. What they are requesting, and I don't have the dimensions in front of me, I apologize, I want to say 85 feet, 85 square feet. Correct. The sign would be allowed on the front of their building. Signs on the sides of buildings have a much smaller allotment of what they're allowing. And essentially, what they are seeking is to put what would be allowed on the front onto the side, because as you see here in the map, it would have more visibility from 23 Mile, which carries a lot more traffic from industrial drive than industrial drive does. And I believe they said last time that should, they understand that the lot next to them just themselves is vacant and may someday be developed. And should that happen, they would then move the sign to the front of the building at that time, because obviously the visibility would go away at that time. I believe when it was tabled last time, one of the things that we were waiting to hear was discussion from the owner on what the practical difficulty was with, why would they need to move the sign to the side?
Correct, thank you. I believe there's also, the owner of the property, I believe, was not in attendance last meeting.
Correct.
There were some questions that may be brought up to him, and it was decided to table it in consideration of the owner not being present. I do concur. That's what I remember. I know there was discussions. I remember Posey brought up whether or not they'd be able to reduce the signed sign to fit within, I think it was 17 square feet. There was some discussion on that, and at the time, the owner or the petitioner wanted to proceed with the variance to install the 85 square foot sign on the side. Are there any further comments or concerns from Mr. Box? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the petitioner. Is the petitioner and or owner here tonight on this item? If so, please state your name and your address for the record.
I'm here, I'm the owner of Sunny's Pools and More. Address is 54470 Salem Shelby Township. And I do believe the gentleman for the, who is doing the sign is online possibly too.
Okay, thank you. If you could just take us through your request, I know Mr. Box gave us the update. If you could kind of take us through your request, and then we will move on to questions for yourself.
Again, as Mr. Box stated, we're just wanting to put the sign on the side of the building due to the building not having a, the building next door to us, and that field being empty, and also east of, across the street from us, that's a service yard that is like very, very dark. In the winter season, there, in the fall and winter and early spring, it's pitch black and dark out there, even though we have building lights in the building. There's no sense of having a sign in the front of the building, and because there's no street lamp at 23 and Industrial on the corner, is a very dark corner, so no one can even see a building that far back, because the one building next to us is gone and the field is there.
Okay, thank you. Is, is the representation from the sign company wishes to speak at this time?
I know, that pretty much sums it up. Brian Duque with Signorama, 36886 Harper, Clinton Township, Michigan.
Are there any questions from the board to the petitioner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Zakarsky. Zakarsky, I know you were in with your site plan for this facility last year. I think you were one of our first things coming out of our pandemic break. At that time, we had discussed a couple of issues relative to business operation. I believe parking was one of them. Use the building, you had mentioned moving from a commercial location to an industrial location. And multiple times and in multiple ways, based on my notes and my memory, you mentioned your business transitioning to a different phase. You talked about e-commerce, you talked about less people in person, talked about wanting to move out of the commercial area into the industrial area. So I guess I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little puzzled by this, because this is more of a move you would make for a commercial location. It's more of a move you'd make when you expect people coming in. It doesn't seem to line up with maybe what we've heard from you about this business before. So I was hoping maybe you could give us an explanation to kind of square those, those two things together.
Very true, that we're still going more and more, more e-commerce. In fact, this past year, there's, our numbers are much higher for e-commerce and video and FaceTiming and all this new technology such as the Zoom, as we're doing, compared to people coming into the building. It's increased from last year. Parking is not a problem. It's the, having a sign on the side of the building prompts thoughts to consumers about our product. It's mainly for the fall-wintertime, when it's our slowest time of year for pools and spas, obviously. And again, it's, it's that purpose of just getting our name out there for pools or spas that we're here. So when they do Google searches and all that, it comes up for them and finds us. And again, the corner at 23 and Industrial has no street light, is very, very dark. And it would just help people as they drive by in the evening time, even though we're closed at that time. And if they are coming in when we are open late on, on evening time, you know, it helps them see the building and see the street.
So if by 10, expand on that, you're, you're looking to use it as a commercial location, and you believe that with the current regulations associated with industrial, you're, you're not able to use it in this case as a commercial location in the way that you would like to?
I don't understand the question. Again, we're, we're still doing what we did when we started two years ago here, because it is actually two years since this all started, and that's why we didn't think about even needing a sign before for evening time during the winter season. We are doing a lot more e-commerce, eBay, shipping out than we are doing retail actually in the stores. So it's not trying to get more traffic. It's A for signage for people who are our customers that come to see us in the evening times when it's dark, but also just as symbolism so people can recognize there's pools and spas, and they can Google us.
If I'm not mistaken, was it noted last time that this is an existing sign from a previous location? Did you look into reuse?
No, it'd be a brand-new sign.
Okay, I apologize. Are there any further questions?
I remember that.
I thought I seen it. I believe there was a note in the request that said otherwise it'd be a somewhat large paperweight, but it would probably be a rezology.
Are there any further questions for the petitioner at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will move, do you have any further comments to make, petitioner?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so hearing none, we're moving to the public portion of this item. If any of the public wishes to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We'll give that a moment. There's no public. I say I'm shy, I don't see any public in there. So seeing none, we will close the public portion of this item and move it back up to the board for comments and motions. I will start. I think member Posey alluded to it at the last meeting. I also brought it up. I don't necessarily, necessarily see a practical difficulty in your request at this time. I can appreciate you wanting to be seen from 23 Mile. However, I'm not so sure that that would meet the intent of the practical difficulty. My suggestion may be, and I don't know if you're open to it, but the 28 and a half inches tall that you have proposed, I still think you could get almost seven and a half feet of just pools. I mean, that'll meet the intent of the ordinance, that'll meet your 17 and a half feet square footage on the side. You won't get hot tubs and swim pools, but you would still get pools at that same exact, almost that same exact sign as you have proposed. And you would still meet the intent of the ordinance. So that's my only comment at this time. If anybody else has any comments or concerns. I also should note for the petitioner, because we are only three members tonight, all members would have to vote in favor for your variance to pass. Do you wish at this time to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, the petitioner wishes to proceed with this item. Are there any further questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Box, Mr. Skirdow, and then I have one for Mr. Lloyd. There's some various signage. I believe there is a sandwich sign near 23. I believe there's a teardrop sign in front of the lot. I don't remember what our ordinance speaks to those, that those count, or from any of the allowable signage on there. How does that reflect it against the signage that he's putting on the wall?
Signage is typically calculated by, you have to ball the signs to get a percentage.
So if we granted a variance for the side of the building of the square footage of the sign that he's proposing to put up, where would we count the one that's not on his lot and on the teardrop in the front?
It could be a consideration of the ZBA to have those removed and not to be used if you grant variance to be conditioned on your variance.
And then, I guess echoing that to Mr. Lloyd, just your, your understanding. I've asked this question a lot, particularly going back and forth between ZBA and planning. I want to make sure we're on, we're on the correct side of the improper, our ability to request or state requirements to the variance specifically with regards to that sign, or something along the lines of, say, we request the bonds to be held for this sign. Do we have the ability, and is it proper for us to be able to do that?
You can provide conditions on variance, so long as it's within the code of order.
So long as it's within code of order?
You need, you need to do a variance, but it would have to be some sort of legal condition. So if you're saying that your condition, their approval, so long as that they, that all the, the area of the signage, you want them to remove the other two so that all the areas within the line?
I would think if we were to do that, that would be a reasonable.
That's right. That's right, because, because you're trying to. That's right. That's right. Because because you're trying, the variance makes sense and it's in line with the code of order, right?
And then with regards to uh a bond, would that be something that would be?
So you're saying a bond so that so that in the event, like for instance, if you're saying if they want to put a
In in the event there's a building built to the south?
Yes.
And the sign is not removed?
Yes.
Um a bond to to uh to move the sign?
I don't see any any concern with that. I think it's possible. I don't know of any other instances where we would require we allow.
No, I I can't think of any either.
Yeah, I think that would be unusual.
Just to to clarify, so what you're saying, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying too. If were you to grant the the variance, uh should the lot to the south ever be developed, you would put a condition that the sign at that time must be moved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And and by the way, in in my thought process of that, it almost runs into I feel it might be a need, but it it almost makes me think there's not a practical difficulty because a variance typically runs with the land. It's normally part of how it works.
I think the bond would be unusual. Um I don't know if I'm prepared to really opine on that today. I would say this, that if they did not move the sign, it was a condition of variance. They would receive notice and if they didn't move it, they could be ticketed for a violation and be brought to district court.
As long as we made the variance that with the condition that if the building had was built next door, that it would have to be.
That is correct. And and they'd have to comply in order for the or in order for the case to be dismissed otherwise they'd be charged.
Um the only other comment, I'm not sure if it's proper to make it here, so I'll I'll start with Colin, Mr. Lloyd, I can mention if he thinks I should leave it. It's just that this might be something we consider with regards to our industrial commercial zoning. Uh but we've looked at things similar to this in commercial. I don't feel we're fairly prepared for it in industrial. I don't know that necessarily meets the intent of the industrial zoning. Um but we've also introduced commercial into our industrial and to me, that's where the lines start to blur. So I'm just the the comment that in this case, I think that we, it needs a second look as well in other capacities after the experience is looked at regardless of how this is light industrial.
We're going to oftentimes have storefronts with light industrial versus heavy industrial. So that's that's where you're going to have this as a comment.
Well, in particular, we added uh a year and a half ago, we added a greater ability to include commercial into the industrial areas, so. All right, um those are all my questions and comments, Mr. Chairman.
I do have another comment. If we were to allow this, I again, I don't necessarily know if I see a practical difficulty. I don't know if I've seen one of these in front of me before. I know we've seen a variance for a sign for a for a building that was setback, but it was the front of the building, but that was the only signage to the main road. In approving this, would we be setting some tentative precedence for the neighboring properties that look, run off uh main road as well? I would let the side sun and that would not be the intent of the ordinance.
So typically, and the rule is that every property is unique and every variance is a little bit of a problem. But I would be remiss if I if I didn't know that in other petitions, they would utilize that as an example plus two, why we should have that. I I should know just because I, you guys have some personal knowledge of this subdivision. A lot of industrial parks have associations. My understanding, because I referenced on this, some people in this that the association is a problem in this particular location. And this this also, this development does not have some sort of signage out in front of the development which identifies the different businesses with within the development, which many of the new developments do. So that that is, that is one thing that is unique to this particular park.
And that was a new asked question. Is there any reason why they don't have some sort of monument sign on twenty-three mile to list maybe some of the users inside that industrial park?
You know, it's preferable, but it was done probably so long ago, I, you know, we don't have any answer to that.
As Mr. Lloyd mentioned, I think we've heard about this before. Their association is no, it's not, it's defunct. So that's normally who would do that. But that being said, that doesn't stop the potential for a monument sign out on twenty-three mile, right?
Well, the the question is if it's a, if it's a, if it's a flat subdivision or has preparations, the association would have to be reinvigorated and the association would have to take that and involve the owners.
So, and Mr. DeCosta, to your to your point here, I I find it a little difficult to find practical difficulty myself. Um the only thing that I would say is when we have looked at similar requests, I think Pat People was one we looked at several years ago. Um uh we looked at the bank on twenty-six mile. Um we did look at how the usage would work relative to traffic. Um I have concerns in this case, but I, there was one other thing that I would consider if I was making a motion. And that is that we would essentially grant them frontage square footage on the side until such point when they had a building on the side and then it would revert. So right now we're all square footage, but let's say they could do eighty on the front and twenty on the side and they could now do eighty on the side and twenty in the front. And they could flip it at the point that the building was there. So essentially, they wouldn't be trying to give them more square footage, but rather giving some flexibility as to where the visibility is, which I think does line up with a logic we've used in determining if there was practical difficulty in the past was where is the visibility? I think we did it with Pat People. Um again, I think we did it with the bank. I don't think you were necessarily involved in that particular variance.
I think in those cases, though, there were roads directly next to them.
There were, yes.
And that in this is, just in my opinion, this is a very large sign well beyond the the requirement because it's so far away, but that that's just.
I would, I would agree if you consider it a side sign, but i- i- if they ma- if they maintain the front square footage, they're not asking to be bigger because they're on twenty-three mile road. If they're asking to maintain the front square footage, I would agree. I I think, I think maybe it stretches the point a little. Um but I think that's part of the reason we're here is to not make it all an administrative cut and dry decision. I I'll I'll be honest, I feel uncomfortable here uh for other reasons. But I think I think the point is, is far enough that for me, it doesn't really make sense. So I'm not trying to twist your arm. It's just where I'm going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any further comments or motions?
Right, I do like Aaron's uh point about flipping, if you will. That makes, that makes sense as a good compromise to accommodate the petitioner and at the same time stay within the spirit of the ordinance.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if you're open, if you're open for motions, I would make one. Okay, Mr. Ready? Uh so that being said, I would make a motion with regards to permanent parcel zero eight one eight three two six zero zero two on the request to allow a building mounted sign on the side that exceeds square footage. Um to allow this square footage as requested uh with several conditions. The first condition being that they would maintain square footage no longer, no larger than that allowed on the front. And that's until that sign is removed, that the front would maintain a square footage of no larger than that is what is allowed on the side. So those two items would be flipped. That the sign would be removed from the side within a reasonable time period if the lots to the south or any of the lots to the south, I believe there's two, are developed. Um and that any other miscellaneous signage that would otherwise count toward their uh allowable sign area be removed if it puts them in excess of the allowable signage given with the variance. This would be based upon the fact uh that this is a commercial use. Um and that's to allow for proper visibility, a larger sign should be oriented toward the main portion of traffic adjacent to the building.
I I would just ask that if you change that from a reasonable time to an actual date period, because that's too difficult to afford.
I I appreciate that. I was thinking that as I said it, but I didn't ask it. Mr. Box, Mr. Skirdow, Mr. Lloyd, any any thoughts on on what that date would be? I think I think a time period from when uh the building was constructed, a building was constructed.
Yeah, I I would say something along the lines of thirty days from the time uh certificate of occupancy was issued in a neighboring building.
And I would say that the sign will be removed no later than thirty days after certificate of occupancy was issued for any building built to the south of this building to between that building and twenty-three mile road, which I believe is two lots.
I will have that in motion.
In motion by Mr. Tough Field, second by Mr. Piper. Are there any other final comments or concerns? All right, we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Tough Field?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta, we'll vote no. That motion just passed. Moving on, we are item eight, public comments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak at this time? I'm looking at the participant list here. I do not see any members of the public. I will open it up for any of the people in the Zoom that wishes to speak at this time. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to ZBA member comments. Is there any, uh Mr. Tough, do you have any comments at this time?
Uh no comments, Mr. Mr. For me this evening, Mr. Chairman, other than thanks for chairing tonight. I think you did a great job and uh yeah, appreciate it.
Mr. Piper?
Well, I know it's April Fool's Day, but I'm still surprised to see snow this morning.
It wasn't a little much, was it? Uh I have no comments tonight. So we move on to item ten, planning director comments. Uh Mr. Box, do you have any comments?
I have no comments.
Okay. And last item is a German. Do a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
For, we had a motion.
Quick question. Did, so did we approve or did we disapprove of Sunny's Falls?
Uh we can speak after the meeting if you'd like. Um we have a motion by Mr. Piper, a second by Mr. Tough Field, uh motion for adjournment at eight oh one. Member Piper?
Yes.
Member Tough Field?
Yes.
Member DeCosta votes yes, this meeting is adjourned.